I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for May 14th, 2024. And we will start with a pledge, indication and pledge led by Councilmember Jeff Harris.
You would please rise with me. Bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you this evening in prayer to ask for your blessings on our newly elected mayor, city council members, and for those who that have served that are outgoing. Dear God, give the mayor, city council and staff wisdom so that we bring civility, stability, and prosperity to our community. Please allow us to be your stewards and help us solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong, and make the best decisions for our citizens and our beautiful city. Thank you, Father, for the beautiful gift of rain that we have received and for making our home in the hill country as beautiful and as lovely as a place to live. Please, dear Lord, watch over our first responders, our military, and those who lead our wonderful country and bestow your blessings and guidance upon them. In your holy and heavenly name we ask. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now we have a proclamation, but I don't seem to have a copy of it. Oh, there it is. No, please don't. We're going to have a proclamation recognizing May 19th through 25th, 2024 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Kerrville. Who's going to receive this? Chief?
Chief.
Oh, good.
Come on in.
All right. I'm going to copy what Mayor, I'm going to reinforce, but first I want some. For all you do for our community. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is a proclamation of the city of Kerrville, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important pre-hospital care, and our emergency medical services system consists of Kerrville Fire Department's emergency medical technicians and paramedics, Kerrville Police Department's emergency medical dispatchers, and Kerr County First Responders, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of the medical, I'm sorry, emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Joe Herring Jr., mayor of the city of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2024 as Emergency Medical Services Week, and in recognition of the 50th anniversary of EMS Week, and the theme is honoring our past and forging our future, I encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing our emergency medical services providers. Thank you. What I'd like y'all to do, if it's okay, is tell us your name and how long you've been with the department.
Stephen Boyd, deputy fire chief, been with the department for almost 22 years.
I'm Brian Bigum. I've been with firefighter. I just started working here two months ago.
My name's Cooper Randall. I'm a driver, and I've been with Kerrville almost 15 years.
Casey Goodman, lieutenant. I've been with Kerrville November for 12 years.
Eric Bonney, fire chief, in just past 27 years.
Congratulations. There we go. Thank you. You have my sincere thanks.
That's getting to be a habit, isn't it?
Oh, I'll tell you.
Thank you very much.
Chief.
Oh, I didn't do the announcements. I'll give you any of them, just thank you. I apologize that I skipped over number one, announcements of community interest.
That's no problem. Welcome to everyone tonight. I'm going to be real brief because we've got a long agenda. We have just a couple announcements. Concerts by the River is back this Friday. This will be the second one in the series, and there's only one more after that, not until September. So the bands will be a country and western base, Louise Hayes Band and Surrender Hill, and we encourage everybody to dress cool. I think the high Friday is supposed to be 87. So come on out Friday night there at Louise Hayes Park. And we mentioned these last time, but you still have three days left if you want to register for the cornhole tournament, which is next Saturday at Trailhead. And then, of course, they're still taking registration for adult soccer league. So if anybody's interested in that, please give the Parks and Recreation Department a call. We'd be happy to take your name. And I turn it over to any announcements from there.
Thanks. Does anyone on council have an announcement to make? All right. Visitors, citizens informed, do we have any speakers today?
Yes, yes, sir. We have two. Peggy McKay.
Come on up. You're done. Okay, she passes.
Gary Knoller.
Gary Knoller.
Good evening. My name's Gary Knoller, and I'm here representing the Kerr County Veteran Services Advisory Committee. We also have another one of our members here, Vicky Marsh is behind me, and one of them is on a panel up there, Mr. Jeff Harris. And we wanted to make sure that everybody in the city knew that there's Memorial Days coming up on May 27th, and the annual Kerr County Memorial Service will take place at the county memorial on the county courthouse grounds. They'll be at 10:00 a.m. And it's open to the public, and organizations, individuals are invited to present wreaths, which will be close to the end of the ceremony. The ceremony is being headed up by Jenna Sanchez, who is the Kerr County Veteran Services Officer. And before that, on Friday, which is May 24th, there's going to be a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the newly constructed Veterans Pathway. Veterans Pathway is a connecting point, starts out at Highway 27 there where Tucker Street used to be, next to Maldonado's, that kind of does a wraparound to Riverside Drive, and one section of it goes down to the boat ramp at Flat Rock Park. The other one follows Riverside Drive, goes down the hill, crosses Legion Bridge, back up the hill on the other side, and connects to the Kerrville River Trail Network. Contractor did that, I think, very nicely because I looked at it to see how it looked. They got done, I think, last Friday. It might be some beautification has to be done yet, but we certainly want to send our thanks to the city for their participation in that because some of that pathway is going to be owned by the city, which means you've got to take care of it and make it look nice. And also with the state of Texas and with the county, Kerr County, and interest in certainly from the VA. So that will allow people from the VA to cross the street at Highway 27, get on paved sidewalk, and come and set this building right here, okay? And a lot of that's not having to traffic, cross trafficways because particularly with the trail network doesn't really cross a lot of streets. So thank you for that. Hope to see you on Friday for the pathway ribbon-cutting, and on Monday then for Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the end of the citizen speakers.
Thank you. Moving on to item 4A. Shelley, would you like to read that in, ma'am?
Ordinance number 2024-14. An ordinance declaring the adoption of amendments to the city Kerrville, Texas charter in accordance with the adoption of propositions A, B, C, E, G, H, and I at the special election held on May 4th, 2024, adopting the charter as amended, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. We do have two citizen speakers signed up.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Mayor, thank you. This is the first regiment ordinance, and essentially what this does is complies with state law because you all are declaring adoption of the amendments. The recitals, the wherethes in the ordinance, set out the history of the review process. The ordinance specifically declares the adoption of those propositions that were passed, A, B, C, E, G, H, and I. Not approved, of course, were D, F, and J. I found it pretty interesting that 27% of the registered voters voted. We certainly would need, should get more than that, but the approvals varied from 90%, 62%, 78%, 59%, and then there were disapprovals, 60% and 52%, which leads me to believe that the voters knew what they were voting on and really gave some time and discernment to the propositions. Per state law, and well, actually per Charter Section 12.07, you also are authorizing a renumbering of the charter because there were some sections, like 1.03, which was deleted, and so we have to renumber, of course, Article 1. It adopts the newly amended charter, or will adopt on second reading, and it requires the mayor to certify the charter and the city secretary to record the charter in the city's official records, and then it provides for other matters. Second reading will occur, if you adopt it tonight, on May 28th, and the amended charter will always be found on the website in the city code. We'll get it published by our code of ordinances publisher and in the library in the city secretary's office. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, do you have questions for Mr. Hayes before we hear from the citizen speakers? Go ahead.
I do. Thank you. I'm still trying to grasp around the allowance of Proposition E with the error that was made in the publication. Can you help me just understand? I know, you know, we've gotten some information from you outside of this meeting, right, during the election timeframe, but I think it's also important for the public to be aware that the notice per state law was that it has to have a copy of the proposed amendments and everything, but there was, you know, an error made. I understood why. I think I saw why. But because now, I guess we had a deficient notice on at least one of the charter amendments, which is E that was adopted, the citizens really didn't have full notice, the legal aspect of it, to what was actually being voted on. So how do we pass that and say we are doing something that's sufficient in terms of the statute as it tells us to do?
Well, as you, I've given you information. I'm comfortable with, and I tell you all this all the time, I would not put an ordinance on the agenda for passage that I didn't think you all can legally adopt. There was a mistake. We corrected it as soon as we realized there was a mistake. We're comfortable that the notice went out and that at least from a global perspective, it complied with state law. And again, I think the voters, based on, you know, the earlyness, how early the notice went in the paper, and the other avenues of ways we disseminated the proposed amendments, I'm comfortable with the action before you.
I just, I think it's, I think we've got to be careful here. The legal notice that was required was sent out, but it was deficient in one area. And the correction that we're saying that we made was a press release and a Facebook post. And I don't think that a Facebook post can suffice fixing an error that's legally required under the Texas statutes. So I am asking counsel to really consider that, and I still haven't gotten anything legally why we can besides people are comfortable with it.
That's not true. That's not true. Go look at your, go look at the information provided you.
I have. I've it pulled up here. Mainly it's that we haven't, we, no other city has seen this case. There's not really case law to support what to do, but we are comfortable with it because of the correction that was made in the press release and the Facebook post, and on the website, of course, too. So that's the information we've gotten. Secondly, if you look at the second page, I guess, of the cover sheet, there is one council member's name missing, and so I would just ask counsel if you are okay with inserting the name of council member place one. That is not on there. So then I would.
Have any problem with adding your name?
Okay.
You're still serving a term to which you elected?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, anything?
No, sir.
Mr. McKinney? Ms. Hughes? Citizen speakers, please.
Nikki Keynes.
Nikki Keynes, same issue. I did look into it as well, and the Texas election, the Texas local government code says that it must be published in the newspaper two weeks, two consecutive weeks. Now, that's where I got my information. I didn't find out until after the Facebook posting that there was a change. So I'm speaking for the voters who may have only seen the newspaper publishing. And the House Bill 357, again, restates that cities and school districts are required to publish their notice in a newspaper in accordance. And I understand there was an error, and I understand the error itself, but if it's one of those oopsies, then I would like the legal precedence for accepting it because of the people who only got the paper, they went and voted based on only what was in the paper. And so there may be a misunderstanding that you're going to have to decide upon whether it is acceptable or not. I ask you to look into it a little bit more because there should be some kind of legal precedence for making some kind of correction. Thank you.
George Broody.
Now, wait a second. This is the first time, man.
First time speaking in front of council. Oh, as mayor, yes, that's true.
Just going to make note of it.
And so we'll make note of this, too. So this is George Broody, 1616 Glen Road, and apologizing for being potentially, or someone could read it as combative the last time, but same issue. And I would go at it from a slightly different thing, a different angle. It's not that it was notified incorrectly. We did notify, the city did notify, all of the amendments. So it's not like it was misnotified. It's tonight, you're attempting, based on the charter that I see in there, to adopt amendments that you didn't notify. So you're changing them in the act you're taking tonight. What was notified in Proposition E was a bunch of stuff that are preposterous on their face, right? It was removing, it was actually removing term from the charter, but it's what we notified. That's what you have to install if the voters voted for it. So to do otherwise is to kind of bait and switch, change the goalposts. And the more prudent thing, I wouldn't imagine that this council body's first act should be something along the lines of lack of transparency as opposed to transparent. And E in particular is a pretty innocuous change. Why not just take the act to it was incorrectly posted and pull that one out of what you vote for? Just don't adopt E and deal with the ramifications of people, you know, arguing that, hey, I voted for E. Well, you know, anyways, that'd be a better thing. The other problem with what you have in amendments is G and H. G, as among other things, has the voter voting for a particular wording of Section 603, the term in removal of the city manager. H has another version of that same paragraph in total in H, same 603. So we have, the voters have voted for G, and they voted for H. There is no way to reconcile those because they are supposed to be mutually exclusive. You shouldn't be having them cross over. And what you see in your resulting charter is a mixed version of the two, which the voters didn't vote for. So again, I would suggest, I mean, at a minimum, G or E, G and H, don't adopt them and explain to the public the reasons why, because they're faulty on their face, G and H, and E in particular, we've posted something that we voted for, and now you're going to tell the voters that you're not going to install what they voted for. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. McCall?
Oh, no, sir. That's the only two.
All right, counsel, we have had some opinions from citizens. We've had opinions from our city attorney and opinion from place one. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2024-14 on first reading to declare the adoption of various amendments to the city charter and to adopt a newly revised charter.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion and a second to adopt? Any discussion?
Mayor, Councilmember Hughes, are you including in your motion to add the name of the current sitting council member to that second cover page? Now, we got two council members who said they were good in the mayor, or one council member in the mayor.
I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
What's that person's name again?
What is it? Clayton Garcia?
I saw a lot of signs. So we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, sorry. Right hand, please. Opposed? It's four to one. I just realized 30 years ago, we said, all those in favor say aye. We didn't do the hand thing, so I'm.
I guess that's muscle memory from 30 years ago.
Item 5A. Shelley, would you mind reading that in, please?
Ordinance number 2024-12. An ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, otherwise known as the City's Zoning Code, by changing the zoning for the property known as 601 Lois Street from a single-family residential zoning district, R1, to a residential transition zoning district, RT, providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. This is a request to change the zoning from R1 to RT at 601 Lois. There's the current zoning map. You have C2 to the south, C2, recently rezoned C2 across the intersection, and R1 to the north and west. This is part of Strategic Catalyst Area Number Four, which includes community commercial, regional commercial, heavy commercial, light industrial, and community commercial present through the Strategic Catalyst Area Number Four. There's the current property. They're going to open the business in the front building, and the rear building will remain a residence, and they have shown that they can meet adequate parking commensurate with RT. Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend this case, and I know the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton? Does the applicant wish to make a statement?
We have no statement tonight, but if y'all have any questions, we'd like to.
Let me just say, I pass, that's one of my routes to work. I noticed there was a sign in the yard saying that there was coming for the P and Z. Sometime after this meeting, I'll try to find a photograph of that house. It was built as a model house, so it's kind of cool. All right, I think in the, maybe in the 40s, 20s, 30s or 40s? All right, that's an aside, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any questions? We're going to open up a public hearing. Okay, the public hearing opens at 6:35. Anybody wish to speak? Close the public hearing at 6:35. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2024-12 on first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Passes five to nothing. Mr. Paxton, looks like you're up for a bit, huh?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2024-13, an ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, otherwise known as the City's Zoning Code, by changing the zoning of the property known as 3600 Memorial Boulevard, Kerrville VA Medical Center, from a public and institutional zoning district to a multifamily residential zoning district and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have two citizen speakers signed up, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to change the zoning from public institutional to R3 for three acres of land out of the VA hospital. There's that depicted here. As you can see, it is surrounded by public and institutional, both the county property to the south and the remaining VA tract of land in the north, east, and west. It is under the comprehensive plan. It is consistent with the future land use plan as part of the community commercial, the community commercial equivalent zoning does allow for multifamily as a part of that. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the request with unanimous vote. If you'd please answer any questions.
You want to have a question for Mr. Paxton?
This is another apartment complex going in, right?
That's correct.
Do we know how many units there's going to be?
No, I do not.
I bet we have somebody here that does.
Okay. Do we have?
58?
58?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
It is a continuation and, or a second phase of Freedom's Path.
Okay.
I'm sorry about, I don't know the exact procedure. If it's a public hearing, do I listen, do we, we call on the citizen speakers first and then have the public hearing, or we open the public hearing and ask the citizen speakers? Does it matter?
It's up, I mean, it's really up to you. It's important it's just.
Oh, we need. Anyone have any discussion? Anybody?
I, I'll just say something about it. It's Freedom's Path Phase Two, and it's on the grounds of the VA. Phase One is there right now, and it is an amazing place for our veterans to live, lower income, homeless veterans. If you haven't visited Phase One, I encourage you to. Kathy, thank you for everything you do out there. There's a recreation room. Gary Knoller feeds our veterans that live there quite often, and it's just, it's a wonderful opportunity that we have to serve, serve our veterans even further in Kerrville. So, thank you.
Why don't we do this? I'll open up the public hearing, and the two citizen speakers will be first. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. We're opening a public hearing at 6:38. Our first public speaker?
Gary Knoller.
Please.
Good evening again, Gary Knoller. I'm representing the Jacob Seelike Memorial Ambits Post 1,000 on this matter, requesting that the city approve this zoning change for Freedom's Path Apartments, Phase Two. Phase One was completed eight years ago, or people moved into it eight years ago. Forty-nine units, which currently is like 45 are occupied by veterans, two are occupied by widows or veterans, survivors of veterans, and then two are other people. And there's a waiting list on going out there of about 30 people who have qualified for housing at Freedom's Path One, but they have to wait, who knows, two years or whatever, whatever. There is one resident of Freedom's Path here right now. Kathy is back here on the, on my left, and she moved in pretty early on and knows a lot of the residents out there, can certainly answer a lot of questions with regard to what Freedom's Path provides. The new addition, Freedom's Path Two, is currently drawn up as 58 units, but that's kind of subject to changes as the market is studied, there's market studies that have to be done, and Freedom's Path One had a lot of two-bedroom apartments in it, which they found out there really wasn't the demand for, so when they come back to Freedom's Path Twos, they cut way back on the number of two-bedroom apartments. There's handicap accessible apartments throughout elevators, throughout the building. There's common areas that are useful. Freedom's Path Two is going to have some things that Freedom's Path One doesn't have, such as a little dog park, and also the one of the. And, and, uh, also, uh, one of the benefits is Freedom's Path Two is going to have a little different income limits because these are, uh, regulated by the federal government because of the tax credits that are involved in the construction financing. And I certainly appreciate everything the city's done up till date, up to date. Uh, resolutions passed here several weeks ago. The Planning and Zoning Commission's passed it. So, uh, we certainly like to continue to have the city show their support for this much-needed housing. Thank you.
Thank you, here.
I can, uh...
Gary Mar, uh, Vicki Marsh?
I'm Vicki Marsh, currently listening for the time. And I also serve as president of the Hill Country Veterans Council, which I always say sounds more grand than it is. We're, we're a small group that are narrowly focused on getting the appropriate staffing and services at Kerrville VA. And, um, Gary and I have been involved in Freedom's Path, Freedom's Paths since 2011, when it was just a gleam in the, in the developer's eyes. So, uh, it's, the, I'm sure many of you were here for the first couple of rounds on Freedom's Path One. It was, it was testy. But, uh, we do appreciate your support. And, uh, we want to, we want to get this one through to completion also. People are hungry for it. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else can speak that even hasn't signed up? All right, it's six forty-two, we will close the public hearing. Uh, recently, I rode with, uh, Dietrich Meals on Wheels, and we served some clients in Freedom Path One. That is a wonderful facility. And the people inside were, were just delightful to visit with. So I'm, I'm thankful for all that, that y'all are doing. All right, is there a motion or any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-13 on first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
You can have it.
All, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, with the right hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you for all you're doing. All right, we're to six A, another public hearing. How, this is a, this is a series of, uh, similar resolutions. And, uh, so we're going to have, I suppose, one, two, three, four, five public hearings, correct?
Yes, sir.
We'll start with six A. Mr. Paxton?
Resolution number fifteen...
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You should read it in, I'm sorry.
Resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution terminating a conditional use permit that authorized a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lot Six of Block One Riverside Edition, and more commonly known as 337 Guadalupe. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, mayor. This is the first of five similar cases. Uh, these are all conditional use permits that were approved by council for a short-term rental unit. Uh, these five did not ever commence to be used as a short-term rental. They never received their short-term rental permit. And because of that, they have expired. The conditional use permit expired through those, through the lack of use. Uh, we did send out notices to the current property owners in addition to our normal notification for zone changes and did not receive any comments from any of the current property owners. Uh, so the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend removal of the conditional use permit so that future owners, it's clear that they're not allowed at these locations.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton? Go ahead, please.
Did you say that they never got their CUP?
They received the conditional use permit. They never applied for their short-term rental permit. The, the second...
Gotcha.
...permit that was adopted by council as an operational permit.
Right.
None of these properties ever applied for that secondary permit.
Okay.
Following the conditional use permit.
All right, I, my apologies, I missed, I probably misunderstood because I was looking at the agenda bill, and it said, uh, "The CUP has expired based on one of the following reasons." And there are like five reasons listed on cells. I wasn't wanting to go one by one ask, but if it's the case that they just all didn't, um, apply under the permit process that we've now established for short-term rentals, that covers that, right?
That's correct.
That's what we're talking about? Okay.
So they never, they never commenced the use within the hundred and eighty days of the conditional use permit. Furthermore, they never received the short-term rental permit to, to operate legally.
Thank you.
And that's the case six A through six E, correct?
That is correct.
Going to open the public hearing on, unless there's further questions?
I'll just comment because, kind of like you, Mr. Mayor, this is a travel path for me to the office daily. And I don't know if y'all have driven by this house lately, but it is gone.
It is.
It is bare dirt. It was up yesterday and gone yesterday afternoon, so...
I notice that as well, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing at six forty-five. And does he want, wish to speak? And I'll close it at six forty-six. All right, do we have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number one five dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Second. Ms. Hughes? Any discussion? All those in favor, give the right hand. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Six B. I'm sorry, read it in first, excuse me. I'm learning.
Resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution terminating a conditional use permit that authorized a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lot Twenty-nine, Block Two, Cinderella Ridge Unit One subdivision, and more commonly known as 105 Jasper Lane. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, mayor. Again, this property at 105 Jasper Lane never commenced to operate as a short-term rental and did not apply for their short-term rental permit. So the CUP has expired and asking council to remove the conditional use permit.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Paxton before I open the public hearing? Any of them? We'll open the public hearing at six forty-seven. Anyone? And we'll close it at six forty-seven. Do we have a motion on this?
I'll move to approve resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Indicate, uh, your vote with your right hand. All in favor? Opposed? All right, it passes. Funny thing is, every time he says mayor, I look for Judy. All right. Six C. Would you mind reading that in, ma'am?
Resolution number seventeen dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution terminating a conditional use permit that authorized a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lot H, Block Five, Pueblo Hills subdivision, more commonly known as 1916 Leslie Drive. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Paxton?
Same, same situation for 1916 Leslie Drive. They did not operate it as a short-term rental and did not apply for their short-term rental permit.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton? If not, I'll open the public hearing at six forty-eight. And close the public hearing at six forty-eight. Your motion?
I make a motion that we approve resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty-four.
Is that your first motion?
Yep.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, sorry. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, right hand, please. Passes unanimously. Six D, would you mind reading that in, Shelley?
Resolution number eighteen dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution terminating a conditional use permit that authorized a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lot F, Block Five, Pueblo Hills subdivision, more commonly known as 1924 Leslie Drive. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Paxton?
Same song, fourth verse. Nineteen twenty-four Leslie Drive did not commence to operate a short-term rental and did not apply for their short-term rental permit.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton? Nope. Open the public hearing at six forty-nine. Now close the public hearing at six forty-nine. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to, uh, uh, I move that we approve resolution eighteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, right hand? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Do you mind reading in six E?
Resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution terminating a conditional use permit that authorized a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lot Ten, Block Three, Starky Manor Seven subdivision, and more commonly known as 604 Mockingbird Lane. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Paxton?
One more time. Six oh four Mockingbird Lane did not commence to operate a short-term rental and did not apply for their permit.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton?
I have a comment, Mr. Paxton.
Go ahead.
Mr. Paxton, we sat through a lot of this together when I was on Planning and Zoning. And the work that the staff had to do on this, and then to turn around and, after all the ridicule and bickering and complaining that we had to sit and listen through, I'll just, you know, it's coming to an end on these properties, and I just wanted to say thank you for your diligence and for, as well as, he's not here anymore, but the chairman of P and Z, to Mike Sederman, because that was not a whole lot of fun at some times. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Open the public hearing at six fifty-one. Close the public hearing at six fifty-one. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty-four.
You're on a roll, dude. All right. All in favor? Right hand? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Ah, something different. Shelley, would you like to read that one in, ma'am?
Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution for the release of an area from the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Such property generally located east of and partially adjacent to the Kerrville Kerr County Airport. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Thank you. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you. The City of Kerrville has a one-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction, or ETJ. And within that, um, the city can regulate subdivision ordinance and sign code. Last legislative session, Senate Bill 2038, amended chapter forty-two, which creates the ETJ, to allow property owners to petition to be released from the ETJ of a city. Uh, this is the first request that the City of Kerrville has gotten. Effectively, they request to be removed. Um, and council can take action to acknowledge that. Uh, but it is otherwise operation of law that they will be removed from the ETJ. See the property here? Uh, it's roughly three hundred acres, um, adjacent to the airport. It is entirely within the ETJ. And they are proposing a county-style subdivision for this property.
Is this the first request to be removed from ETJ that we received?
It is.
All right, any questions for Mr. Paxton? Almost want to open a public hearing just for fun, but... Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-four.
Your second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Are there, yeah, I, are there any specific things that we need to be looking at when we determine? Like, have we set any type of criteria or policy when someone requests to petition to be removed from the ETJ that we have something that we would follow on that? On reasons why we would consider voting in favor of it?
We don't have a, a policy, or council does not have a policy. However, we felt was, it was in the best interest for council to acknowledge these removals. Um, again, if there's no action taken, it is removed by operation of law. Some cities allow them to just, time to lapse, and they're removed by operation of law. Some cities have given staff the authority to basically write a memo acknowledging that. And some cities have taken it to council for action.
Not really much choice about the matter.
That is correct.
Right.
And is your policy going to bring, uh, be to bring this to council?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I think to protect the city and our interest in growing, at least acknowledging that they are removed. Should there ever be legislative changes, we can point to the action that was taken by council.
Okay.
Um, but it is of interest, although we don't have much option.
Right.
Um, it is certainly of interest to council and staff to acknowledge and document these well so that, again, if there are legislative changes, uh, we can respond accordingly.
Any other questions for Mr. Paxton? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Sorry, mayor. I thought, I thought we already had a motion for it.
We do.
I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Oh, I remember, you were, you were doing a lot of motions earlier. I'm sorry, we do have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's unanimous. All right. Seven B.
Authorization to negotiate and approve a professional services agreement for services necessary to update the city's comprehensive plan, Kerrville 2050. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
All right. Mr. Paxton, are you with?
Thank you, mayor. So the comprehensive plan was adopted in June of 2018. Uh, it is common to update the comprehensive plan every five to ten years. Um, obviously, as things change and, um, action items get checked off. And we had proposed in the budget last year for a comprehensive plan update. Council approved the city manager to execute a contract with Freeston Nichols Incorporated to do that update. And in the meantime, TERS board also, uh, was looking for a downtown plan. Uh, so before you, as an amendment to that original contract to add the scope to include a downtown plan, while Freeston Nichols is already engaged in the comprehensive plan update. So again, April ninth, council approved the original contract. April twenty-third, the council approved the TERS funding of the additional fifty thousand dollars for the downtown plan. April twenty-fourth, the TERS board approved the funding and scope for the downtown plan. Uh, so the scope, overall scope will include public engagement for the update. Update to chapters for economic development, housing analysis and strategic plan, and mobility and transportation. They'll review the market, land use, and infrastructure updates that have been done since 2018. Include resilience and sustainability through the various chapters as needed. We are doing a Nimitz Lake Small Area Plan. And they'll update the implementation plan from the outcome of the public engagement. And then, like, the additional scope is the downtown area small, or downtown small area plan. Excuse me.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, please.
This is going to be used from the TERS funds that were approved, right?
The additional scope of, for fifty thousand dollars is coming from TERS. The initial capital improvement project, um, was allocated in the city budget for up to two hundred.
Right.
So that, that portion will be under budget for a total of two hundred and forty-five thousand.
I want to make sure that I'm getting right how the funds are going to be divided or properly used in this way. So I see there are some things in here that are outside of the TERS district, which is also basically the exact same thing as our downtown district, right? So those funds are still going to be only strictly used, I assume, for that update? And then the rest of the, what, two hundred thousand is going to be used for everything else? Is that how we're dividing that up?
That's correct. With, with it being under one contract, um, it is lump sum basis as we go through the project.
Okay.
Uh, but the TERS is funding the downtown additional scope, correct?
Gotcha. And is there a reason why we put them together? And the only reason I'm saying this is because the first time that this came up, where we were just requesting money from TERS, and this is just also going to council, what my thoughts are right now, I was already a little bit cautious about going to them and asking them for money. Specifically, you know, for this, you know, I thought we could do it a different way. I voted in favor of that anyways. After hearing the TERS Board and they had some really good discussions, I thought there was one member who voted against it, and I think she made some really good points on why they needed to hold off or why it was a little premature at this time to do it. And it really, you know, you can change your mind sometimes, and I was already cautious about it, and what she said kind of brought me over to her and be like, yeah, I absolutely agreed, and that's kind of where I was heading at the last council meeting when we considered it. So, we're lumping them together, I guess, for the simplicity of it, so it's all under one contract, right?
That's correct.
And the hard thing for me right now is hearing the concerns that members of the public have had with it and the members of the TERS Board expressed. I'm concerned with just that one area, and I feel like we can use the other elements that we have in our downtown area, like their Main Street Advisory Board. We can use TERS Board, we can use other areas rather than going outside. I think citizens here know exactly what we need in our downtown area, especially if there are businesses or citizens who are often in that area. And I don't think we necessarily need too much outside sources to help do that. I think our citizens are very knowledgeable about all of that. So, I'm thinking out loud and speaking out loud just to let everybody understand where I'm coming from in this, because we're putting it all together now, and if it were separated, my vote would probably be no on one part, yes on the rest of it. Last question I have on it is, can you help me understand why we got some of these areas involved, like the housing analysis? And, not that I'm not okay with that, but we already had a housing study done by Mayor Bill Blackburn, he was mayor, with the House Committee that was put together. I thought we could use some of that information that's still from their report, and also the Nimitz Lake small area plan, how those got selected to be in there.
Absolutely. The housing analysis, as we're working with multifamily developers or single-family housing developers, we do point to the 2019 housing study that was done.
Right.
As we're all aware, we've had a pandemic since then. The market has changed in Kerrville, the economics have changed. So, they always have a question of, is that information still valid? So, using this process to, one, to validate the 2019 study with as much change as we've seen in Kerrville, much less the state and the country, but to update the market study for the housing analysis. Rather than staff anecdotally saying, yes, we had a need then, we still have a need now. The developers, when they're getting ready to start their investments, want to see a little more fresh information, so this will help provide that. As far as the Nimitz Lake small area plan, we do have, of course, some redevelopment efforts on the north side of the lake, and then we've, obviously, quite a bit of vacant land on the south side of the lake. There are two separate strategic catalyst areas in the current future land use plan that speak to the impact of the, to the development and to the lake, but it doesn't go into detail. So, what we're looking with the small area plan is to go into detail looking at the current infrastructure, future infrastructure capacity, and the land use, and combine all of those to show what would be appropriate as far as the levels of commercial, the levels of multifamily or single-family development. Really dialing in what that area can be, looking for the future. Again, working with developers as they come in and they ask, you know, what does the city see this area as? They're not looking to just push their agenda, but they want to know what is the community looking for. So, kind of an update and more of a detailed analysis to that area.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor.
No? I do have a comment about the one paragraph in the contract. It's on page 2 of 8, and I'll just read it. It says, "FNI, Freezer Nichols, will not provide updates to the Planning and Zoning Commission or the City Council throughout the process. City staff, at their discretion, will choose to provide briefings to these bodies as necessary, and then Freezer Nichols will assist." Is it your intention to...
External kneeling staff, statute update. Good afternoon.
Is your intention to keep both the P&amp;Z and the City Council apprised of progress as we go through this, because it appears it's at your discretion?
Yes, absolutely. So, that's, obviously, on the consultant's scope, we're not asking them to come present to you.
Correct, but we need to be...
Through updates, but staff will absolutely update P&amp;Z and council.
Any other questions for Mr. Paxton? And do we have a motion?
We do have one citizen speaker.
Oh, you're right. Thank you for helping me.
William Rector?
Director.
Bill Rector, 705 Water Street, Honorable Mayor and Counsel. I am excited about downtown being looked at, about a downtown plan. We've got a lot of things that need to be done downtown. We are very fortunate in our downtown area. I just finished a trip to Denton, and I went through many, many small towns that have vacant and boarded up downtowns. Denton was the only one I saw that was nearly as prosperous as ours. So, I appreciate the fact that we are looking at a downtown plan. However, as I read the plan, I see that TERS is primarily going to be the group that is going to be controlling what is in this downtown plan. And there is no question that everybody on the TERS group is a great citizen, and they love downtown, but none of them work there. None of the people on the TERS Board actually have businesses within the downtown area that they're going to be planning. It says that they may consult with the Main Street Advisory Board. It does not mention anywhere that they will be concerning or consulting with the HDBA or the Historic Downtown Business Alliance, a group that's 25 years old, that is consisting of businesses downtown and building owners downtown, that have chose to put their business in downtown properties rather than going to somewhere else within the city. Property owners who have decided to invest in downtown, and none of this group is going to be part of the planning process for downtown. So, I would ask council that you look at how that this is set up to create this downtown plan, and consider giving a larger percentage of the, or a larger part of the planning to the Main Street Advisory Board, your Main Street Advisory Board, and also to the Historic Downtown Business Alliance, those businesses that are downtown in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor.
Figure.
Any response, Mr. Paxton?
Since the TERS Board is funding the downtown plan, we wanted to make sure they were the board that was overseeing the public engagement. Similar to the comprehensive plan update, the consultant will work through open public engagement with the entire community.
Stakeholders in the area?
Stakeholders in the area, such as the Historic Downtown Business Association. Since they are not a city board, staff didn't want to recommend placement of those members directly to this, but certainly they are, would be engaged as stakeholders in downtown.
I'm understanding the gist of the contract, the consultant will be going out to stakeholders, trying to have engagement.
That is correct. So, we'll be sure to include the Historic Downtown Business Association as one of the main stakeholders.
And Main Street Advisory Board?
And Main Street Advisory Board.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Paxton?
Can that specifically be put in the professional services agreement?
We can add that to the scope.
I'd like to see that.
Yes.
Are you, which part, the Main Street Board?
Both.
Okay, both of them?
Yes.
Would that be helpful?
Yes.
And it's easy to do that?
We can add a liaison from both boards.
Awesome.
To sit on that as the oversight committee.
Perfect.
Do we have a motion then? To amend the contract as discussed?
Oh.
Whoever wants to do.
I'll make the motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a professional services agreement, with it amended to include a representative from the Main Street Board and the Historical Downtown Business Association.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate with the right hand? All opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Paxton. 7C.
Construction agreement with Rio Grande Valley Industrial Machine Shop and Pumps LLC for the wastewater treatment plant, clarifier number three, rehabilitation project, in the amount of $991,800, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will make this quick. This is a project that's long overdue. We've had to work on some system redundancy at the wastewater plant, so this one did not come first because we had to build the new one. Once we built clarifier 2, we were able to get into 3. What this scope is going to be is, actually, no structural, or very limited structural components. It's going to be just the mechanism itself and a few ancillary items. Once we got the bids, and we got five bids, very competitive, all, you know, under, or most under the engineer's estimate. And so, we actually had to do a little evaluation of the vendor themselves. It's not somebody we're familiar with, Rio Grande Valley, I think we know where that is. Freezer Nichols and staff did the reference check. Everybody had high regards for them. And then additionally, what we did is looked at, there were three alternates that were identified that we wanted to explore options for. The recommended action right now is to take alternate 2, which is a stainless steel mechanism, to prolong the life of that structure. That way, I'm not coming back to you here in 10 years to replace it again. So, tonight, the action item is for the base bid and alternate 2 only, for the amount shown. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Do we have a motion then?
I'll authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a construction contract.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate with the right hand? Posed? Passes unanimously. 7E.
Process to appoint a person as a council member to the position of council member place one. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Mayor, council, I'll be quick. We just wanted to put this on there to start the process, kind of talk through it. Y'all have 45 days to appoint somebody to place one.
45 days after the election?
45 days after.
The canvas?
Tomorrow is when my resignation goes into effect.
Yep.
All right. Let me propose something. I think the citizens want us to go ahead and take care of this in a thoughtful manner, and not rush anything, but get the work done. I would like to propose, with y'all's consent, that we have a special meeting a week from today, where this is the only item on the agenda. I would propose that we each come with one or two names to propose for an appointment. However, you need to contact that person to see that they will accept the appointment. We don't want to surprise anyone. Therefore, you also need to apprise that person that there's a likelihood they will not be appointed. This gives everybody this week, this weekend, and then come together on Tuesday, have this as our item, go into executive session, discuss the possibilities, and if we can't make a decision that day, we don't. But if we can, we proceed. That's what I would suggest. I'm certainly open to any other comments. Anybody?
What time?
What time would be convenient? About 5?
Mayor, council, y'all tell us.
No, no, I just want, I want it to be convenient for everyone, but it would be good with you, Roman? About 5 a week from today?
I think I can make that happen.
I can at 5, yes, sir.
That could, that could. Okay, then I would propose that we have a special meeting next Tuesday at 5, with the desire to have an appointee named at the end of that meeting. Again, if for some reason we can't agree, or we need to take longer, will take longer. But if we can agree, that lets everybody just get on to the next chapter. All right?
Yep.
Do we just need consent on that, or do we need a motion?
Then it's good, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Appointments of council members as members and liaisons to city boards and commissions. I guess I read that in myself, didn't I?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, really on this one, we can add this also to the special session next week as well. If you guys, you know, if y'all want to kind of chew on this a little bit. Really, this is just the worksheet that we use that's in your packet to kind of just highlight who the interview teams are for the different boards, if there's any board liaison recommendations that y'all would want to be a part of. This is an opportunity, you know, with the EIC and, you know, Mayor Haring on here, you can take the opportunity now to kind of make an appointment on that if you want, the way we worded it, y'all can make those appointments tonight as well, and we can also put this on the agenda for next week as well.
I know we have appointments to be made to EIC. That would probably be separate, though, would it?
Yes, sir.
Because that's not, that's not an agenda item.
I think he's maybe, if I can, Mayor? Maybe including that, the appointments of council members as members to boards to include EIC?
Yes.
So, maybe we can do it, right?
We could do it.
Next week's meeting?
Yeah, that was for the, that was for a council member on EIC, Mayor.
The EIC regular members have been bumped to May 28th meeting.
Okay, so we have at least three appointments for EIC for next time.
Yes, sir.
We'll need to replace me on EIC. Is there a rush to do it tonight, or do you care? Let's just wait until the 28th and do it all at one.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
If that's okay with you guys. I mean, I have a recommendation for the council member, but I don't want to put anybody on the spot. What, Charles?
Here we table.
Yeah, let's save it.
Okay, thank you.
Are we going to, Mayor, if I can, are we going to cover the other liaison? Or like, interview teams for all the other stuff? Want to take a look at that now, or?
Do you think there's a need to change any of that?
I don't, but I was just seeing with the rest of council if they had a... I don't think.
The big ones, EIC. I think KEDC and K-Pub are pretty much by, are in agreement with those groups.
Right.
So, I'm going to be that one.
Are we pretty much keeping the ones that we have if...
Is that something you would like to do?
Well, I was previously, excuse me, a liaison member with the airport planning, or the airport board. And so, since I'll be stepping off of that, y'all may want to either wait until my successor replacement, or do it now, if anybody's interested or whatever y'all want, but that's one that I'll be stepping off from, so.
No, let's wait.
It's okay, we'll just wait.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. 8, thank you for the worksheet. I don't think I've ever seen that worksheet. That's very useful. Appointments, 8A. I don't think we'll need to go into executive session. I would like to nominate Brenda Hughes as Mayor pro tem. Is there a second?
Oh, second ten, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say hi? Or, sure, with the right hand? I had to unthink some of that stuff. All right. There's no need to go into executive session this evening. Are there any items for future agendas?
No.
I think we need, I think as a council, we need to use this more often, because there are some things that citizens bring to us that are concerned that this would be a good way to address them. I don't have anything to add tonight, but I hope this is something that's more robustly used in the future. If there's nothing further, we are adjourned at 7:17.
Well done, Mayor.